Twenty twenty-one at seven o'clock. We'll start with real call to my left.
Homer, City Council member.
Dr. Joseph Ford, City Council member.
Ronnie Price, Mayor.
Troy Taber. Troy Taber, City Council President.
Mike Warrington, City Council member.
Tim Berry, City Council member.
But Buchanan, Chief of Police.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Lance Onstot, Assistant City Administrator.
Mike Roosevelt, Fire Marshal.
Rick Landis, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
Kimberly Gilchrist, Assistant to the City Attorney.
Susan Renner, City Clerk.
Jennifer McCoslin, City Administrator.
All right. At this time, we have an invocation, Daniel Ivey with Anchor Baptist Church is going to lead us in that. How you doing, sir? Good. Let's pray. Dear Lord, as we come to you in prayer this evening, we ask that you would just grant us wisdom tonight as decisions are made. We ask for your blessings on the meeting and that you would just bless our community as well. We thank you for your protection and wisdom over the last year and a half through all of the COVID. We just pray that you would help us move forward in spite of all of the restrictions and all of the guidelines and just help us to continue to grow and to prosper. We are thankful for those that are willing to come and to serve. Pray that you would just be with the meeting tonight. We ask all of these things in Jesus's name. Amen. Amen. Does Stanford pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This time, I'm going to open up the floor for a public forum. Come forwards, state your name and where you live and keep it short. All right.
Good evening, I'm Jill Hodge and I am a candidate for the Andover School Board. I want to tell you a little bit about myself and why I decided to run for school board. But first, I want to make a confession to you. A little bit nervous. I've never done anything political before and running for school board at such a time as this is terrifying. However, as I reassure myself that I've made the right decision, I want to share with you three different occasions where my decision was confirmed. First, on a Sunday morning several weeks ago, my pastor at Emmanuel Baptist Church delivered a sermon that concluded by asking, is God opening a door for you that you're afraid to step through? Yes. Second, I recently heard Mike Pompeo speak and in his comments, he said, and I'm paraphrasing, decisions about and solutions for the issues confronting students, parents and teachers are not made in Washington, but at the local level. So if you want to make a difference, run for school board or city council. Okay. Next, the mayor of Andover told me if I want to make a difference, I can't be afraid to jump. Right. Finally, the most importantly scripture tells me in Joshua one nine, have I not commanded you? Be strong and courageous. Do not be afraid, do not be discouraged, for the Lord your God will be with you wherever you go. So here I am, I'm walking through the door, I'm jumping and I'm going because I want to make a difference and I think a seat on the school board will do that. I'm an educator with thirty-one years of teaching experience in four different states. I've been married for thirty-eight years to David and have two children, Lauren and Bill, both of whom are Andover High School graduates. I excel in building relationships with students, parents and community members, and I lead with integrity, honest and transparency. So what do I want to accomplish as a school board member? The answer comes down to one word, passion. I have a passion for Andover schools. I have a passion for helping students better themselves. I have a passion for service. I'm passionate about the education of all students, including those who learn differently than their peers. I think we should acknowledge the success of every student. Those students going to community college or vocational school or entering the workforce should be celebrated just as much as those who are going to KU or Wichita State or any other school. There are many issues facing our schools today, but the bottom line for a school board member is to keep the needs of the students front and center. We can't get sidetracked by political agendas and all the noise that competes for our attention. God made each of us with unique gifts, skills, abilities, thoughts and behaviors. So my desire to help the Andover community is to leverage our diverse backgrounds and opinions, work together in unity to bring about action which produces results. We all want what's best for our students, so let's keep the main thing, the main thing. I've been a part of the Andover community for eighteen years and developed many strong and lasting relationships with the people here. A seat on the school board will allow me to use my gifts, talent, skills and experience to give back to this wonderful community a fraction of what it's given me. I'm Jill Hodge and I would appreciate your vote on November second. Three minutes or less.
There you go. You left out that your husband rides a Harley, so.
I'm Sonia Cox and I live in Andover. Do you really need my address?
No, you don't have to.
Okay, good. I'm running for the district on the three area and I want to take the opportunity to kind of share with you a little bit about me. My goal as a board member will be to advocate for students, parents and teachers, ensuring that our school district continues to be the great district it's already today. My husband Brian and I have been in Andover for over a decade and we have been married for twenty-two years. We have two kids that attend school here, one at Sunflower down the street and one at Andover Middle School. When I joined Morenado in the year two thousand, seems like a lifetime ago, that's when I first got introduced to the community of Andover. And little by little, it grew in our hearts as a place to be. When we decided to make a family, this is the place we moved to. So we've been here happily living. Like many parents, before our kids started school, we extensively look for options on where to send our kids to school. And we're lucky to have so many options. We toured public schools, even not only in Andover, but also Wichita. We went to the parochial schools. We visited all the private schools. I did my due diligence, tortured my husband through that. But we decided on Andover as the place where we needed our kids to be. It can afford unique opportunities to students, just the way it is set up, the emphasis in education, but also in the whole person, we think Andover is the right place. I have been helping out with my kids and in their schools since they enter kindergarten. And I'm still are a room mom. I also help with the PTO at both schools. And I am a member of the Sunflower Side Council, if you are familiar with what that is. I work with teachers, with kids, with students. I donate my time, my talent, my treasure in order to make the schools a better place. And through those experiences in those schools, I have been able to see firsthand the effort teachers put in educating our kids. They do so every day. They have a commitment to education and their dedication on doing their best with what they are given. Sometimes they have a lot to work with and sometimes they don't, but they always make it work. In my background, I have a master's in business administration from Pitt State, so I'm a gorilla. I have four undergrads in finance, economics, management and marketing. So I've been in the business world for over twenty years. I understand what it's like to work with budgets, to do resource allocation, how to hire and sometimes fire people. I also understand what it's like to build a team, to understand what to do. Is that my timer or something else?
No.
Okay. I have also served in some nonprofit boards in our area, so I understand what it's like to build community and help everyone around us. Four months ago, I was not planning to do this. And because people asked me to step up and volunteer beyond what I was doing, after a lot of painful confirmations with my husband, I decided to go forward and you have me here today. I think people move to Andover for our schools. They may stay because of our community. But at the same time, due to the hard work of the people like you and the ones before you, we are all proud to call this home just because of the continued work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if y'all remember this, when I was barely a mayor for about ten minutes or so and we had a housing addition come in and they were very, very upset with us.
What?
Yeah. It was hard to believe, huh? But Sonia was sitting in the front row and she stayed until it was over because she's part of that housing addition that was not happy. And she sat there and told us how happy she was with us and very thankful for what we do. So I just, I thank you for what you're trying to do. Right? I remember sitting right in front row, huh? And I said something about if you ever want to run, but I didn't think you'd really take me serious, so. All right. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Luke Henwood. I live in Reflection Lake. I've been there for about three and a half years. And my, my topic is about my concerns on Yorktown in front of Prairie Creek. I got two kids there that go to school right now and I, I believe that it's very unsafe for the crosswalk because there is none. And also, I wish that there was a stop sign leaving the YMCA Sports Center because there is none. Because when there's games there, a lot of the drivers drive really, really fast and they speed around that corner. So I know that a couple of years ago, Mr. Landrith, I spoke with you on the phone and I was assuming that there was supposed to be a crosswalk leaving the school and a sidewalk being built on the west side of Yorktown. I don't know if that was, if I was misunderstood.
We put a foothold for some money into a budget for it for the following year and then we consulted with our traffic engineer who advised us that the way it's laid out now is probably the proper way for it. There is a crosswalk. It is on the other side, I believe probably from where your kids cross, on the other side of Minnehaw. The cross is over, there's a handicap ramp and a crosswalk going across on that side.
Okay. Because I just, I see that they have to cross many, like three different streets before they're able to enter into Reflection Lake. But if they're able to cross in front of the school and get on that sidewalk, that would be their only cross that they would have to do. But there's no lights or anything besides the, there's a school speed limit slowed down between three thirty to four. There's no lights, there's no, there's no warning. So I just, I would like it to be safer for the kids to be able to cross. I wish that there was lights, flashing lights, something to get people to be aware. And even that stop sign leaving the sports center because, yes, cars drive very fast leaving there. Even not during school times.
Luke, are you referring to the Far Hall Center, between the Far Hall Center and the Y? Is that the zone you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and we're aware that it does turn into somewhat of a racetrack when, so we'll take a look at it. But yes, it's, it can be, it can be a racetrack. We've, hence why there is speed, what do you call it?
Speed tables.
Tables in Yorktown and, I mean, sorry, yes, Reflection Lakes, yeah, on Minnehaw.
Yeah.
When we wanted them on the other end too, but the people in the residential area there did not want them on the other end as well.
Well, I'm not talking mainly about on Minnehaw. More about Yorktown because just on the weekends, I've been, I've, with my kids, walking on Yorktown in front of Prairie Creek and they, when a game is leaving or they're late to get to their game, I mean, they race down Yorktown.
Okay. What's your last name, Luke?
Henwood. Andrews.
How do you spell your last name?
H E N W O O D.
Henwood. H E N W O O D.
Sorry, Luke. Rick, is that correct? There is no stop sign there coming out of the Far Hall Street heading west?
That is correct. That is also a private street. That's not a city street.
Yeah. They're both, they're both private streets?
Well, the street coming out of, the street I believe he's referring to is the one coming out of the Far Hall Center that comes back towards Yorktown. Is that, am I correct?
Yes, you are.
That's a private street, not a public street that comes out. Yorktown is obviously a public street.
But we can still put a stop sign on it if needed, right?
I suppose you could. Obviously, if, well, this gets into more traffic laws, but I believe that they're required to stop if somebody's on the sidewalk. They're supposed to stop behind a sidewalk already.
But there's no sidewalk there, right?
Uh, there, yeah. There is.
Oh, you're going to show me?
Yeah, they're required by law to stop at any private drive. But as far as the placement, we'd have to probably get with attorneys or whatever, can you put something on a private, a sign on a private?
I want it to even know it's a private, no one's going to even know.
I think it's a good idea.
Looks like a road. You're coming down a road.
Kind of like Jaguar drives the same way.
Anyway, so.
All right.
Jenny, you have something?
Well, it sounds to me like we need to talk to the YMCA because it's YMCA's property. So we won't go put a sign up on the YMCA's property without consulting with them, but we can certainly do that.
That'd be great.
Could we have, chief, could you park an officer there, like find out when basketball games are letting out, just more of a deterrent?
We've tried to work with them at different times to let us know when they have events, but it's just a matter of them letting us know and calls. So what we would like to do as well, when we do those, is we can set up different selective enforcement manners. So when we know something's going on, then we can have an officer either get speed data. We've done that with Yorktown before or Minnehaw before as well. So that kind of helps us see during the peak times when that's happening. So when you have those, please call, especially if you see it. That way, we can have an officer get down there pretty quick if they're on a call.
Mr. Henwood, are you speaking of like when Far Hall or are you talking just normal when school lets out?
The, the stop sign that I would like to be there, I would like that to be there for all times because those games happen weekends. I don't know how often they happen on weekdays, but I mean, that'd be nice to have it all the time. The school crossing, I would love just for school times.
Correct, okay. In, in most cases, and I agree with you, I'm on that road almost daily. More than, more than, I don't live out there, but I, I'm nosy. And chief Buchanan can speak to this better than I can, but a stop sign on private property is, for example, some cities, if you have an accident on, on, for example, Atwoods, somebody runs a stop sign, police are not obligated to show up because it's private property. So in short, I'm sad to say that there are suggestions and often lead to nothing if, if something happens, so.
Isn't Yorktown supposed to go all the way through Harry at one point in time? Is that the future outlook?
That's way down the road.
Would they be required to have a stop sign at that time?
It's so far down the road, brother, I can't even, the likelihood is not, not, so I can't speak intelligently on that because nor Santa Claus, you know what I mean?
Well, I mean, it's, it's still private property, right?
Still going to be private property.
They would never need a stop sign, right? Because Andover Road doesn't have a bunch of business, right?
But, but yes, we are very aware of it and it's, it's, it's a, we'll, we'll look into it already.
Well, thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you for coming and speaking. I know that's hard, so.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Public forum is closed. Acceptance of agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Presentation seven one swearing in of Andover Fire Department graduates.
Care to join me, gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for assisting us here with this. Folks, tonight we have five of our recent reserve graduates from our fire training academy. These gentlemen, before you have spent lots of hours, many nights a week, many weekends, being down at the firehouse and learning all that there is to be considered a firefighter for your community here. Very proud to say that these gentlemen have done their due diligence and are earning their boots every step of the way. So thank you, guys, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right, Jill. Want to just feel a bit closer? I'm just nervous of yours, so don't worry about it, all right? All right. Aye. Please state your name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the ordinance of the City of Andover.
And the ordinance of the City of Andover.
And faithfully discharge the duties as a firefighter.
And faithfully discharge the duties as a firefighter.
Of the City of Andover.
Of the City of Andover.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, men.
Appreciate it.
Proud of you. Awesome. 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 You men are in good hands with the leadership you got, I promise you. All right. Consent agenda. Yes, sir.
I move to accept consent agenda items eight point one through eight point six as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Nine one, the planned unit development, final planned unit development. Let me try this one more time. Final planned unit development plan. Justin Constantino.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The subject property is located south of East Douglas Avenue and west of Yorktown Parkway and is part of the Heritage Preliminary PUD Plan, a single-family residential development intended for higher residential densities. The Heritage Second Edition Final PUD Plan creates sixty-eight lots on approximately ten point seven two acres. Water and sewer service for the subject properties will be served by the City of Andover. The subject properties will receive access from Douglas Avenue and the newly constructed Shea Road. The final PUD was reviewed and recommended for approval by the subdivision committee at their August tenth meeting and subsequently approved by the Planning, Planning Commission at their August seventeenth meeting one week later. Staff requests that the governing body accept the land dedications for the Heritage Second Edition Final PUD Plan as presented and I'm available for any questions.
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the dedications for the Heritage Second Edition Final Planned Unit Development Plan as approved by the Planning Commission.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Petitions, developer agreement and resolution of advisability. Lance Onstot.
Mr. Mayor, Council. The owner, developer of the, of the Heritage Second Edition has submitted petitions for public improvements to serve the subdivision. The petitions submitted are for paving and then an additional petition for paving of the alleys, which is unique to this development, sanitary sewer improvements and also water improvements. Those petitions are one hundred percent to be assessed to the benefit district. The city at large does not have a participation in these petitions. In addition to the petitions, this item also includes the required developers agreement and resolution of advisability. With that, I will stand for questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion, I'd move to accept the petitions for paving, paving alley, sanitary sewer and water distribution system, approve the developers agreement and adopt resolution of advisability related to the Heritage Second Edition.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the construction of certain internal improvements related to the Heritage Second Edition.
Second. Any further discussion? Up.
Aye.
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 Wow, messed me up all, all opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Tell him Homer to go ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve an agreement with MKEC Engineering Incorporated, Wichita, Kansas, for engineering and design and construction phase services for the Heritage Second Edition in the not to exceed amount of three hundred nineteen thousand five dollars.
Second.
Five dollars.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something real fast?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to let everybody out in the audience, plus if they're watching, you know, we just spent or approved a lot of money and all that, but all of us on the board have actually seen this already. So if we're not asking questions, that is why. We've all read this, we've asked questions behind the scene. I just kind of want to remind people that because sometimes when you watch this stuff, you, you think, why are they not asking any questions or saying anything? It's because we've read it, we, we've seen it prior to this meeting and, and we've emailed questions to whomever we needed to get the answer from.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, they are very frugal with the taxpayers' money.
And also, I mean, Mr. Mayor, to that point too, I mean, I think the hundred percent to the special assessments needs to be pointed out as well that this then is taken care of by the developer, not, not the city as far as the funding for it.
Thank you very much, Homer. Excuse me. All right. Hodge's Sixth Edition Subdivision Final Plat, Justin Constantino.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
The subject property is located at three two seven West Turnpike Road, generally located at the northwest corner of Main Street and May Street. The applicant is proposing seventeen total lots on approximately ten point nine five acres of property zoned MF two attached, single-family residential district. Water and sewer service for the subject properties are currently served and will continue to be served by the City of Andover. The subject properties will receive access from the existing May Street. The preliminary plat was approved by the Planning Commission in February of two thousand twenty-one and the final plat was approved by, yeah, the final plat was approved by the Planning Commission in May two thousand twenty-one and the preliminary was approved back in February. Staff requests that the governing body accept the land dedications this evening and I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Quick question for the fire chief. Do we have any challenges with the big fire trucks getting around that?
Based on the preliminary documentation that we had during plan review, all of the roadways meet the applicable standards in the city. Being able to access all of those locations should not be any issues with the radiuses of the turns and such. And additionally, the water system that's going to be placed into that, that location is fairly robust.
Cool. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do have a question. Justin, what was, I guess, I know where this is, but I can't picture what's there now or what was there. Is it just an empty lot now or?
Yeah, it's an empty lot now. It's just east of Teradyne and south of West thirteen.
And this is single-family homes, I'm assuming?
It's multi-family, yeah, so it would be duplexes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
It's much like the one, it's the same people that are doing the ones that are already there. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment.
Yes, Mike.
Thank you for putting the water and sewer and drainage on these, it's always good for us to look at that, and especially with my background in engineering, I always like to, I'm a little nerd on that, so. But it's nice to see that and that, you know, there is a detention pine that's going to be used, and so there's some good planning that looks like it went into this.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the dedications on the Hodges Sixth Subdivision Final Plat as approved by the Planning Commission.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Petition ten two, petition developer agreement and resolution of advisability. Lance.
Mr. Mayor, Council.
So, the owner, developer of Hodges Sixth Subdivision has submitted petitions for your consideration for paving, sanitary sewer, water, and stormwater drain improvements to serve the subdivision. These, as with the previous item, are one hundred percent assessed to the lots that you see that are being plotted this evening. Attached with this item again is the developers' agreement and the required resolution of advisability. Questions? I will attempt to answer.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one.
Yes, sir.
Lance, is this part of the neighborhood revitalization program, or are they getting any rebate, or?
It is, so this area is included within the neighborhood revital, the currently adopted neighborhood revitalization program. So, upon building permit issuance and an issuance of certificate of occupancy, these properties would be eligible for a forty-five percent rebate on their taxes for five years.
The old NRP or the new one?
The new, so it really kind of depends, I mean, that rebate percentage stays the same in the new one, but it really just kind of depends when they make those applications for building permits on which program that they'll be in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the petitions for paving, sanitary sewer, water, and stormwater drain improvements, approve the developers' agreement, and adopt a resolution of advisability related to the Hodges Sixth Subdivision.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Work ordinance, Lance Onstock.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the construction of certain internal improvements related to the Hodges Sixth Subdivision as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Move to approve the agreement with the Baughman Company PA Wichita, Kansas for engineering, design, and construction phase services for the public, improvements related to the Hodges Sixth Subdivision, and the not-to-exceed amount of one hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I could have added five dollars to that. I don't know why they didn't.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Meadowbrook Second Edition Final Plat, Justin Constantino once again.
Good evening again, everybody. The subject property is located west of South Andover Road and north of West Harry Street. Meadowbrook Second Subdivision is a replat of the Meadowbrook Subdivision Final Plat that was approved by the Planning Commission back in October of twenty nineteen, and the land dedications were accepted by the city council in July of twenty twenty. So, some of you have seen this one before. The applicant submitted a replat of the property with the desire to increase the rear yard drainage and utility easement on lots one and two of Block B from twenty feet to forty feet, so if you're looking at the plan, you can see the little notch there on lots one and two. The intent was to shift the utility easement to make room for the proposed drainage lines to get them away from the existing trees, and the drainage lines only extended along those first two lots. The subdivision committee reviewed the Meadowbrook Second Subdivision replat at their June eighth twenty twenty-one meeting and recommended approval by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission subsequently reviewed the final plat and approved it at their August seventeenth meeting. Staff requests that the governing body accept the land dedications, and I'm available for questions.
Got one question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mike.
The temporary fire department hammerhead that was placed on lots eight and nine, is that going to be, is that there just for this phase, or is it going to be always in this person's yard, basically?
What's a hammerhead?
It's a T-turnaround, so the fire department can pull in one side, back in the other, and then turn as well.
Thank you.
So, it's another option instead of having a cul-de-sac.
The, this hammerhead was put in place due to the length of the primary access road, and pursuant to our current fire codes, there's a maximum length without turnaround availability. The T-hammerhead is one of four designs that is approved. This one was selected because of the property acquisition and various other components of this particular piece of property, and it is temporary, so in so much as when the road is extended beyond onto the next piece of property, should that occur, and we have no idea of timeline for that, so it may very well be permanent within our careers, but temporary in the overall scheme of the development.
Yeah, it appears that it goes over the property setbacks, on the front setbacks. I'm just wondering, I mean, obviously, they're putting in a lot of lots, you know, and putting in a temporary, wish they could have put that on the back end of it, or shrinking, shrunk their lots a little bit or something for that.
There certainly are a myriad of ways to address that. Not losing the lots, I believe, was the developer's preference, and certainly those last two lots probably will be latter in the project during development, and as such, the temporary nature of the turnaround should be minimal impact for them. Should the land acquisition and such be quicker, certainly road extension and cul-de-sac development or further interconnectability between other areas as the city expands would alleviate that turnaround.
Right. The final plat doesn't show that, it just shows the, on the drainage, is that right, the drainage, yeah, the drainage plan, I would think that would need to be shown as a temporary easement on the final plat if it's not shown on there. That's just a comment, so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, sure.
Are, since it's in their yard, looking at the plat on here, can they not park anything in there, can't put something in the way ever, it's not theirs kind of thing, or how's, how do you?
So, this particular development is the first that I've seen it done in this manner. I've not had any discussion directly with the developer, all my comments have been returned via other staff through the normal staff component pathway. That question has not been brought up to us. Certainly, if it is labeled as a fire lane, then there would not be any permitted parking there ever, other than for fire apparatus, just as in every other fire lane that exists around the community. Councilman, your comment is probably spot on, that maybe there does need to be some temporary easement action there. That's out of my realm of purview, but I defer to other staff as to whether, how and whether those are appropriate. What I can speak to definitively is that turnaround is necessary at the end of that street in some way, shape, or form.
I agree with that. What material is this? I mean, it looks like rock to me, but is it concrete, or is it?
It can be any number of material combinations, as long as it's capable of supporting seventy-five thousand pounds in an all-weather environment and a minimum of twenty feet wide.
Wow.
And I believe sixty feet in overall length, but please don't quote me on that, I don't happen to have NXD with me in my hand.
It's one hundred and twenty foot wide.
Yeah.
Is what this is.
One twenty by twenty.
The whole T.
Yeah, that's probably sixty feet each leg, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Have we made a motion on any of this yet?
No.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the dedication on the Meadowbrook Second Subdivision Final Plat as approved by the Planning Commission?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Revised petition developer agreement and amending resolution of advisability. Lance.
Mr. Mayor, Council, as your Assistant Director of Community Development informed you this is a replat of a project that was written, that had been previously plotted, as such, with the name change, we felt it best to require revised petitions, a revised developers' agreement, and amending documents and amending resolution and ordinance reflective of that name change, just for posterity's sake, to make sure everything matched. So, these petitions that you see, the amounts, the assessment percentage, which is one hundred percent to the benefit district, have already been considered and accepted by the governing body under a different name, so really, it's a name change that you're looking at here for all of the documents.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the revised petitions for paving, sanitary sewer, and water, approve the developers' agreement, and adopt amending resolution of advisability related to the Meadowbrook Second Subdivision.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move to adopt an amending ordinance authorizing the construction of certain internal improvements related to the Meadowbrook Second Subdivision as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Yorktown Streetscape Amendment Number One to Engineering Design and Construction Phase Service Agreement. Rick Lansworth will speak with us.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Yorktown Streetscape Project is nearing completion, however, it was originally slated to be completed on July second, and obviously, we've ran well past that time. Some of those delays were out of the contractor's ability to control and some were not. We have not finished that project yet, however, it is nearing completion, but MKEC has run past their not-to-exceed amount for inspection services on this project due to some of those delays, and has sent a request for an amendment to this contract agreement. They're about sixteen thousand over right now, they did request up to twenty-two and a half extra thousand dollars added to the contract, so it's not increasing it to sixty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars, that's including that twenty-two thousand five hundred. Jason Gish with MKC Engineers is in the audience, if you have any questions regarding that portion of the cost or project. If you have any other questions, I'd be more happy to try to answer those.
Anyone?
I guess since the contractor ran late on, seems like everything, why are we stuck with this bill?
Well, there are some avenues inside of our contract with the contractor that could potentially recoup some of those costs, however, since the project is not done, we haven't come to a formal agreement on that yet, but there is some language in the contract for running long for reduction in pay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Do you have a breakdown of this request, or can you explain what the whole twenty-two five and more depth is?
It would be based on hours, and usually, I see that when they send their invoice in for pay, they haven't sent this request in because it exceeds their previously approved amount. So, if this is approved, when they would submit their time sheets in or their time request in for pay, we look at that and then we approve it and go on forward. Obviously, they haven't done that because we get denied at this point because it's exceeded the not-to-exceed amount.
So, does this mean that the whole twenty-two five would be used, or they could, you know, come out and only bill us twelve thousand?
Well, their statement is they're about sixteen thousand over now, so, and I, we, there are not a lot of time going in this project right now because of where the state's at, it's just final completion out, really, we got to do. So, there's potential that it could come in under the twenty-two thousand five hundred to request them, but I wouldn't suspect it'd come under the sixteen thousand, they've already said they've incurred. This is a, I guess I should say it's hourly, billed hourly rate, not-to-exceed amount, but the project ran, obviously, long. We do have, in our contract language, what we call liquidated damages for days going over on a contract, that is some way possibly to recover some of this cost.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Are there any examples of things they did have control over that they maybe squandered that time, that, you know, they didn't utilize that properly when conducting this project, that we can recoup without kicking this out?
Yeah, I'm trying to say, delically, we haven't had those negotiations with them at this point, but there is some times where we document when they're on the job or when they weren't on the job. The items that were beyond our control, obviously, when parts, as everybody's aware right now, sometimes it's hard to get certain products and parts. So, those type of things, we typically would not hold a contractor responsible for, but when there was work to be done, it could have been being done, and there was no work on the job, that's the days you would hold them responsible for.
And I just want to clarify for the public because I think this could be a little confusing. So, we have before us tonight a change order with the engineering firm who does the design and the construction and the inspections to ensure that the contractor, which is who we're referring to, had some overruns, is doing what they're supposed to do. So, what I would say is this is work that the engineering firm has done that is a result of this third party. The engineering firm is not the one that was delayed or caused us to go over on days, they're just kind of like side damage or something to that effect.
I would say that this is not the first time it's ever happened inside the city, this is probably a third time I'm aware of in the last five, six years where contractors ran over. Typically, we were able to recover that cost through our contract with the contractor, but their contract with the consulting engineering firm is with us and not with the contractor, so their only recourse is to get the contract extended with us.
Yeah, I never like to do liquidated damages unless it's, you know, there's neglect, so there's a possibility that this is what you're saying that could happen.
Correct.
And if I'm reading correctly, you're asking for approval of the amendment and recommending it, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the Amendment Number One to the Yorktown Parkway Streetscape Engineering Design and Construction Phase Services Agreement, increasing the not-to-exceed amount to sixty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars.
Second. Any further discussion?
I, Mr. Mayor, I just want to.
Go ahead, Tim, I'm sorry.
It's just frustrating, I'm not the construction phase, I don't know much about this stuff, but it just seems that, you know, the design, the engineering firm, you know, if the contractor's not working, the engineering firm probably shouldn't be working either, is that correct?
Some of that, also, sometimes the speed of the work that the contractor is doing, or sometimes where, when days are figured, you could probably figure there could be two or three different crews doing multiple phases of work with only one crew shows up, so that can cause delays in getting done at the same time.
So, matter if contractor A is working at five miles an hour, you got the engineer that we're going to pay no matter what, and it's supposed to take two hours, but that contractor's taking twelve, the engineering company is still on the dime charging us.
Yes, now, obviously, that's where your liquidated damages that Councilmember Warrington brought up, there is also other factors coming into play, and we did back the hours, the time spent on the job down considerably towards the end because sometimes there was just one guy out there doing some masonry work.
Thank you.
And is, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Is there someone that double checks the, I mean, I appreciate Jason being here at MKEC, is there a double check as far as the time that they've put into it, or do they just say, I put in eight hours, and Rick's like, yep, you did eight hours?
So, obviously, we don't clock them in and out and so forth like that, they have some professional liability to make sure their billing practices are appropriate, we do look at the bills when they come in, and that's part of my job is to look at it, if we see something that it looks way out of line, we will call them on it. something that it looks way out of line, we will call them on it. Otherwise, we then approve it, move it on up the chain.
Thank you, Rick.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Member items.
I just want to thank the school board, I guess, candidates, for coming in, and then also Luke, for bringing the stop sign to our attention. I mean, I definitely wouldn't have known there was not a stop sign on that road, had you not brought it to my attention. So I appreciate that, and moving forward, we'll look into that, you know, maybe seeing if we can do something there, okay? And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a reminder to the community that GAD starts this week, so buy your buttons, you know, three-dollar buttons.
That's right there.
That's it.
Advertise, right there.
All right.
I'll be in the tailgate for that, and it's a competition, so I'd appreciate it if you come out and eat some more food, vote, you know, for whomever. Do you mind if I?
No.
Okay, so it's been a busy week for several of us on the council. We had the Kansas Economic Outlook Conference last week, and it was pretty exciting, a lot of pretty amazing information. I can't really go over it all right here, but I would recommend going to c e d b r dot o r g and look and see what's happening in the state, as far as, they talked about agriculture, cows and pigs, and corn and such, as well as what's potentially happened with our economy and the state of Kansas. They talked about all of the open jobs that are out there, and then also the changes in households, and how it looks like maybe those jobs will stay open and people are just gonna stay home. So there's a lot of information there. It's good to know it, especially if you're looking at volunteering or being a part of the school board, or even us. It's really good information. They do that every year, and they have conferences for the next month, month and a half. Yeah, go ahead.
Could you repeat the website for me, please?
It's c e d.
C.
E is an elephant, d is a dog, b is a boy, what's the R one? Somebody give me R's and R.
Robert.
Dot o r g.
Robert.
Robert, thank you.
Rover.
Romeo.
Romeo. That's what it is. All right. We also had the Kansas League of Municipalities Conferences last weekend. Myself, and Tim, and Susan were there representing, and there's a pretty large amount of information, but it's really good to talk with people from other cities, see what they're doing, let them know how we're doing. A lot of cities in the state are doing well right now, as far as, really, a lot of stuff, investing in their downtowns, investing in walkable places, and bicycles, and all kinds of pretty amazing things. And the last thing is the Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. We have a, we had Andover out there a few months ago, a couple months ago, that Les gave a pretty awesome presentation about Andover. Today was Goddard, and Goddard had a pretty neat presentation that they used the ArcGIS software that I think, I know that we are a part of. And I'd like us to look at that presentation, and maybe see if we can pull a lot of the data that Goddard provided to, regarding their city for us. It's neat how it has a history of how the growth of Goddard has happened, and you can just kind of look at it, maybe online, for our residents to see kind of the growth patterns. And just, it's a lot of great information. And the last thing that, so I don't take up too much longer, is we do have a pretty neat history of growth in Andover every ten years for the census, and one of the things that I thought was a little bit shocking is we're always looking at the growth of Andover, and it's growing, 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 which it is. Right now, we're at fourteen thousand eight hundred ninety-two people, according to last census. Previous ten years ago, it was eleven seven ninety-one. But what I wanted to point out was, starting in like nineteen eighty, we'd went up forty-nine percent from previous ten years. Nineteen ninety, up forty-four and a half percent that the tornado hit in ninety-one, and we jumped sixty-five percent for that decade, seventy-six percent between two thousand and two thousand and ten, but only twenty-six percent between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, which is a dramatic drop in the percentage of growth of Andover. So I don't know exactly what that means yet, I just kind of noticed that today, but it could mean that we're growing slower, or we're managing growth better, or we're reaching the boundaries of Andover. Lots of things it could mean, but it's interesting information. Thought I'd share it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Troy.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
To talk about your investing in our community, it's one of the things that we're attempting to do with our one-cent sales tax with our fire department and our Thirteenth Street Park, and I'm sure Jenny will pipe in here, as she and I were on a Zoom call today with Butler Community College Board Meeting, and Jenny did a great job of presenting that, and I had a couple two cents I threw in there, but do you want to talk more about that?
Sure. It was a nice opportunity to get in front of the trustees and tell them what this project is, since it's going to be near both of their locations. For the public that may not be aware, because we're pretty early in the planning, the college is planning to put a culinary school at U S fifty-four, and so the new fire station would serve them well, being south of fifty-four as well. We hope they don't have kitchen fires, but it's a possibility. And then, obviously, Thirteenth Street Park is next to their main campus here in Andover, so they would have a lot of exposure to these two big projects. And I think the information was received pretty well. We had an open house on Saturday from noon to two, and had staff, many firefighters throughout the building, showed everybody all the different nooks and crannies, and how we're getting every, sucking every little bit of life out of that building that we possibly can, making it as functional as possible. Rick and I were out in the ambulance bay, where we had some of the parks' displays, so that people could see depictions of what Thirteenth Street Park could look like. We had just under fifty people, which, in a two-hour span on a Saturday in the fall, I think is pretty impressive, because there's so many things you can compete with on a Saturday in the fall, and so to have that many people come out to learn about what we would like to do with this revenue was really great.
Are we gonna have anybody at GAD, Jenny?
We are. We're going to have a, actually, I think, you're going to be driving a golf car.
Mike at the Business Expo, are we gonna have a tent, or any, okay.
Susan's gonna be at the Business Expo, and we will have a lot of information at GAD, both in the parade, as well as at the Business Expo. With this information, the videos are playing on the amphitheater screens right now. I believe they're still muted, because that's a little, I don't know if Crescent Lakes wants to hear the videos twenty-four seven. So right now, they're muted, but you can still get the visuals. Tomorrow night, I'll be going with Councilman Barry to Prairie Creek Elementary Site Council, since they're located right over there by the new proposed fire station. Lance will be going with Dr. Ford to the library board meeting tomorrow night to talk to them. So we've got a few more rotaries coming up at the end of the month, so we're trying to get out to as many of these community groups. Certainly, if the public's still hanging with us at this point, if you've got a group you'd like someone from city staff or city council to come make a presentation, we'd be delighted to do that.
Sonia and Jill both made the tour of the fire station Saturday. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Very impressive.
Got work to do, don't we?
I do have a couple things, since I am on the end here. Mike, were you done?
Yes, I'm done.
I want to thank the city for letting myself go to the conference this weekend. It was a very amazing learning experience for somebody who's never gone there. Troy is, we do have a great advocate for the city. Troy is amazing. He is, he's on the board for the Kansas Municipalities League, League of whatever it is. So Troy is very well-respected, so I thank you for doing what you do, Troy. It's amazing how you advocate for ourselves up there, for our city. And then, Susan, have we got the sample ballot yet? Have you gotten that yet? Okay.
If you go to the Kansas, the state of Kansas website, and put in your name and your birth date, it will bring you up the ballot at one point. It'll show you, you have choices to make.
Okay.
On the Butler County website, still no ballot, but the ballot has been seen. I know we checked it yesterday morning, but it has been seen today that you can see the entire ballot for the people that live in Andover, and what's going to be on it, so.
I tried it earlier, and it would come up, after Jenny and I spoke about it.
Okay, yeah, because I went to voter view and put my address in, so maybe it depends on the address. So we'll look into that. I mean, like, if some of it's working and some of it's not, but that was through the Secretary of State's website.
So, Rick, I just want to, I told you earlier, but Yorktown's looking great. Your guy, you know, the crew did a wonderful job. The Parks guys are keeping it looking great. You know, the, by, what pad is there at Yorktown and?
First.
For, yeah, I mean, they're really trying to keep, you know, the disc golf going, and keep it looking good. So, I mean, your guys are doing great. So tell them thank you.
I will. And did you notice they moved holes, or T-pad for sixteen, and they were able to move it in one piece, so we didn't have to report, so I was happy about that.
That's the one by the sign.
Yeah.
And if anybody's still watching or out in the audience, go look at the, what do we call that, the Andover Central Park?
Sign?
Yeah, sign.
Monument archway?
Archway. I'm like, wait, what is, what is that called?
It's this.
Yeah, this thing. Go look at the archway at night, it's beautiful. It's amazing. I mean, it is, yeah, it's phenomenal. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Jenny?
I did want to just share a little bit of reflection. I got to travel on behalf of the city at the start of this month, and go to the International City County Managers' Association Conference, and much like Troy and Susan and Tim brought back from the league, there are a lot of good things going on, but my main takeaway was, man, things are good in Andover, and we have such an awesome community, and I go to these sessions, and I hear what these cities want to do, and I'm like, we're doing it, and that's really exciting. I told Jason earlier tonight that one of the keynotes, like, they didn't use these words, but basically, they were like, hey, suburbs, you need a heritage. You need a heritage in your life, because communities that are just cookie-cutter suburbs, that don't have something walkable, that don't have a little bit of entertainment sprinkled in, that don't have gathering places, they're dying. But those communities that are figuring out how to take a little bit of urban and sprinkle it into your smaller, safer community are winning, and I just felt really, really reaffirmed that we are doing a lot of right things here. I have colleagues across the state and across the nation who would give anything for one subdivision with all infrastructure to be paid with specials on an agenda, and we had three tonight, and we, like, it's routine. We just approve them. And it's not that we don't think that they're important, but it's come to be routine because we are growing, and things come here, and I just, every once in a while, I think we should stop and celebrate the fact that I think there's some really great things happening in this community. We are building a place that people want to be a part of, and we just need to make sure we keep that up, and we stay in front of that. And that's a good challenge. That's a lot better than a lot of the challenges that other cities are facing. So thank you for the opportunity to travel on behalf of the city, and work with all of you for the citizens of Andover.
All right. Anyone else? All right. That just speaks to our staff from top to bottom. Even the new guys that we bring on, bring on to their top shelf, you know what I mean, and they take care of everything from stuff we don't notice, and it's, staff does a wonderful job, man. It's, it does go unnoticed to most people daily, but it doesn't go unnoticed from, from the governing body, I promise you that, you know. It's, they just, they don't realize how nice this city really is. And when I went door-to-door two years ago, I won't name names, but they didn't want to be other communities. They wanted to be something different, and we're well on our way to be different than other communities because of what we're doing, and the challenges we face are small compared to what they face, right? So it's a great job. Thank you all for what you do. I appreciate it. All right, motion adjourned.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Hit a roll, we're getting pretty good at this thing.